All right. It is 7:01 and I will call the meetings at order. Janet, if you would take the role, please.
Councilmember Chupiano?
Here.
Councilmember Tillman?
Here.
Councilmember Clovin?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Juan?
I am here. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. If anyone has anything that they'd like to comment on that is not on the agenda, now is the time.
Mayor Juan, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Okay. Then we will move on from public comment on non-agenda items and move on to the consent calendar. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull from the consent calendar? Nope. I would take public comment on the consent calendar. If there's anyone that has comment on the consent calendar, now...
Mayor Juan, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Okay. Then I will close this comment, public comment on the consent calendar and look for motion. There's a first by Councilmember Clovin.
And I'll second.
And a second. Janet, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Chupiano?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clovin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz? Mayor Juan?
Aye. And with that, that passes and we will move on to recognitions and presentations. The first item on this agenda is a proclamation declaring the week of April 23 through April 29 as Clayton Community Library Week. I have a proclamation and I understand Ms. Moss is here to accept it. So, this reads, "Whereas libraries provide an opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life; and whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status; whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure the equity of access for all; and libraries adapt to ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collection services and partnerships; and libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs." Now therefore, there's a lot more. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jeff Juan, Mayor, on behalf of the entire Clayton City Council proclaim National Library Week, April 23 through April 29, 2023. During this week, we encourage all residents to visit their library to explore the wealth of resources available. And I would like to present, if you'd like to share any comment, you're welcome to do so. Yes, please.
Yeah, so I just would like to say a couple things. First of all, thank you Mayor Juan and honorable councilmembers for recognizing this upcoming week as National Library Week. To let you know, things are very exciting at the Clayton Library now. We had in-person programming brought in full force at the beginning of the year. And some of the highlights are that we had 180-plus people attend a presentation by Python Ron right here in this room. Lots of people were here. That was also after the first stormy Tuesday, so people were braving everything and coming in, checking out what the library had. It was a great time. Our staff attended Career Day at Clayton Valley High and interacted with approximately 500 students there. We have weekly events on Wednesdays for elementary school children, since that is early release for many of them. And core programs such as Storytime continue to be popular. While the COVID response impacted our services, it also provided staff with time to step back and return with intentional programs that meet the community's needs and wants. The Clayton staff took full advantage of the pause and the proof is in the numbers. We had 22% more people attend our library, just coming in the door count, in March of 2023 over March of 2022. So that was a huge increase. All of the activity inspires our staff and we hope to see even more people come in as the word continues to get out about all of our offerings, which include homework help, a brand-new memory cafe that just was rolled out this past Saturday, eBooks, streaming services, and the ability to check out ukuleles among many, many more things. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any, anyone who'd like to offer any comment on Library Week? I would just say that my kids love coming to this library and I appreciate all the things you do, so thank you.
Thank you. And I am thoroughly enjoying being on the Clayton Community Library Committee this year as your city liaison. And I've learned so much. I thought I knew a lot about the library, but so much. I'm so happy to hear traffic is up tremendously. And it's just been a real treat getting to know you and the foundation. Thank you, Geneva.
Thank you, Kim. And we appreciate all the support the foundation provides us too, what you're referring to. Thank you.
I would just echo what they just said and that I'm pleased that you guys are back open again and that the kids are loving it. I know mine did as well when they were youngsters, but now they're going to high school and college libraries. So, thank you for instilling that in them.
Thank you. Do we sign the, I think we have to sign the thing and then I will, I will get it in one moment. Next, on the docket is a presentation by the Mount Diablo Interpretive Association. Councilmember Chupiano, did you want to kick us off and introduce our guests?
Yes, it's my distinct honor to introduce my friends from the Mount Diablo Interpretive Association. Mike Brandy is going to be our presenter this evening and there is a presentation that they'll be sharing with you, which is also in the agenda packet. Mike, after retiring from a career in community college administration, Mike has volunteered as a docent at the Henry Cowell State Park and for the last seven years for Mount Diablo State Park. He's a frequent docent at the Visitor Center in Mitchell Canyon, right here in our neck of the woods, and he is Vice President of the Mount Diablo Interpretive Association. He is currently serving as co-chair of the committee to build a new educational center in Mitchell Canyon, which he's going to talk to us about tonight, as they seek to raise $3 million to bring this vision to reality. Take it away, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We'll have to figure out the technology here. I think she's going to queue up the presentation. But first of all, thank you so much for taking the time. We're really very pleased. I know you have a very big agenda and a lot of work to do, but just to take a few minutes, maybe 10 minutes here to learn about what we're doing. We're really pleased to be in Clayton. We come out here so often to the Visitor Center. Both, I'm here with my colleague Gary Parkhurst. We're both docents out there. We love it. This time of the year is one of the busiest times of the year on the mountain, as you can imagine. We have wildflower season with 150 different blooms on the mountain right now. So, we're jamming out there right now. There's a lot of folks coming out and really enjoying the mountain. So, we have the project here that we'd like to talk to you about. This is the beautiful entrance coming right down, you know, the road here to Mitchell Canyon. We love it here. Next slide. So, we're a 501(c)(3). We're a nonprofit. We've been in business for almost 50 years. Our 50th year anniversary will be next year. We're very excited about that. And normally, we've never do fundraising. We've never done that. We get, we sell merchandise, we sell ice cream. When you hike up the summit, you can buy one of those ice cream bars. That supports us. And we have some membership. So generally, we, we get about $40,000, $50,000 a year in revenue. And then we turn that over to the state parks for projects that they're interested in. So fundraising is not in our, we've never had to do that. So this is all brand-new. We're all volunteer. We don't have any paid staff. Everyone that you see involved in it is a volunteer. In November, almost two years ago, 2000, well, more than two years ago, 2020, we had some reserves and we decided that we should decide what to do with that and what capital campaign. And the obvious need was a new visitor center out at Mitchell Canyon. If you've been out there, you know our little trailer's out there and we wanted to see if we could replace that. So, next slide, please. It's a busy place out there and we get about 35,000 visitors a year that come out to Mitchell Canyon. Actually, that wound up a little bit during the pandemic because even more people came out. Most people that, you know, come out, why don't you go to the next slide? Most people that come out are coming out for hiking, they're going up to Summit or Eagle Peak or the Waterfall Trail, they're going mountain biking. We're seeing a lot more mountain bikes now, particularly because of e-bike capability, that people can get up to the summit a little easier. We have sponsored trail runs. A couple of weeks ago, there is an ultra marathon, 50K run, taking place out of Mitchell Canyon for these runners running all over the mountain. People come out for family hikes. Right now, wildflowers are just crazy in terms of just being really interested. Butterfly hikes, tarantula hikes. If you haven't come out in the fall and done a tarantula hike with us, come out in August and September and meet these gentle giants. And this is a destination from all over the Bay Area. When we were doing this study for the new visitor center, we had several weekends that we interviewed all the visitors coming into it. And about 50% of the visitors were local, meaning Contra Costa County, and 50% were not. So we had visitors from San Jose, Pacifica, Marin, Sacramento, Napa, Stockton, all over. I mean, it's a beacon, obviously, you know, to the Bay Area. You see it wherever you're driving. And that's pretty typical for just about any weekend, is that we have a lot of out-of-town visitors and a lot of first-time visitors that come. So it's a tremendous asset to the Bay Area. Next slide, please. So there's our little visitor center. I'm sure you've been out there. It's a trailer that's 10-foot by 40-foot, 400 square feet. It's been there since 2004. It's not a permanent facility and it's not, it's way, way too small. We have some tremendous displays inside there, but if you get inside and there's more than three or four people, it's crowded. And most people, when you're approaching it, they don't even know what's in there because it's not welcoming, it's closed up. And so if people stumble into it, then they're surprised, but, but it's not, it's not our future. You know, it's something that served its purpose and it served it well, but we need to do something different. Next slide, please. So what we're missing is we're missing a large indoor space for visitors, but particularly a big, big emphasis of ours is with school groups. And we cannot get a school group in there, obviously. It's 400 square feet. There's no, there's no there there. So we want something that's larger. We want a visual connection to the native plant garden. You'll hear a little bit more about that. We already have that in existence. And we want a large outdoor pavilion, a covered outdoor pavilion that can serve visitors when we're closed, because right now we're open on weekends and holidays, not during the week. I was over there yesterday for a meeting with someone and I had the door closed and I had like five different visitors coming in, you know, "Hey, are you open? Can we come in?" Well, we need a way to serve those folks. And so we want outdoor exhibits. We want a gathering place. If you go up there to meet a group, there should be a place to kind of gather and say, "Here's where we're going to be." And then a multimedia room or multimedia space. We do a tremendous job with films. We produce Audwo Mount Diablo, a film series called Wild Mount Diablo. We do monthly webinars that we post up. And we want to be able to have something, you know, that you can show, a large enough space to show these. Next slide, please. So here's the conceptual design that we started two years ago. Next slide, please. So, when we first started this, quite frankly, we thought that we have a small trailer, let's just get a bigger trailer. So we hired these architectural firms, where associates, to come out and do a study with us, talk to all the constituents, and, you know, what are our needs? And it became very clear that the site itself needed to get revamped. Some of you from a long time ago may know that originally this was, not originally, but in the 50s, this was a community swimming pool. It was an Olympic-sized pool out there. And the buildings that you see right now, the restroom buildings, that cinder block building, those were the shower rooms. That's why they're so big. And that metal building next to it with the long window in the front, that was a snack shop. And that's why the window was there and inside, there's still the remnants of the kitchen facilities. And then the parking lot is where the, the swimming pool was. And I'm not sure how long it was operation, but it closed in the early 50s. And so, we want to revamp the site and move the visitor center and open up the pavilion and so forth. And we'll show you what that will look like, please. Next slide. So this is what we envisioned for the visitor center. Something that is level to the ground, so it's ADA accessible. If you've been out to the site, you know that it's not ADA. I've been out there for seven years. I've never seen someone in a wheelchair because you can't get across the dirt parking lot, even though there's a ramp up to our building. And we want, we want that to change. We want this building to be ground-level with ADA accessibility all along there. We want it to be welcoming so that there's, there's natural, you know, light to see inside and see what's going on and it engages you to come in. It draws you in. This is envisioned to be 1,500 square feet. A standard classroom is about 1,000, 1,100 square feet. So we want it to be large enough to get a full class of children in there during a field trip excursion. So we're very excited about this plan. Next slide. So this is what the inside would look like in the conceptual drawings. We would have space for, you know, movable and permanent exhibits. We'd have a little audiovisual area over there that we could expand with more chairs to host a whole class if we needed to, but we have some films that we would just like to loop and show all the time. And, and it just, it's spacious, obviously. Next slide. So this is the outdoor pavilion. This is what we envisioned to be outside of the visitor center. And this would be open, of course, all, all year. I don't know if you've had a chance to go down to Shadow Cliffs Regional Park recently? That's a East Bay Regional Park project down in Livermore. And they just built a pavilion just like this one. It's the same architects, actually, that designed it. And it's a beautiful outdoor pavilion. It has all these exhibits around, a topo map, you know, seating around. And it's probably about, probably about 1,500 square feet. So it could house a whole, you know, classroom of kids in there as well. That's what we want. We want a gathering spot. We want to be able to have a place for exhibits. We want to be able to have a presentation area for our tarantulas, you know, whatever we're presenting on. So we're very excited about this aspect of it. Next slide. So this is, this is the big thing with school buses. So right now, you know, you can't get a school bus up on Mount Diablo. You've driven North Gate and South Gate Road. It's very difficult to get a school bus up there. It's very difficult to get car pools of kids coming up there. The roads are narrow right now. Both North Gate and South Gate are down to one lane because of storm damage. It's just not accessible. And even when you get up there, most of the time they go to Rock City. There's no, no place there. You know, there's no place to go. So, the ideal place for us is here at Mitchell Canyon because it's a straight shot-in. We already have enough room for a school bus to make a turnaround in our parking lot. We have parking for school buses. We've got the access nailed. And so, and this opens up to this whole, you know, side of the, of the community out here. So we're very, very excited about this possibility. Next slide, I think this is where you take over, Dick.
Yeah.
So at the risk of setting myself up, show of hands, how many have been to Mitchell Canyon before? Oh, very good. So you can really relate to what Mike was talking about and what I'm going to share with you. So, you know what it offers in terms of the community. You know what it offers in terms of the greater Bay Area and, and how it represents the state park so well. But you also see and understand how the trailer does not represent what Mitchell Canyon should represent. So as Mike outlined, the plans that we have are going to move it from a visitor center to an education center. A very different way of positioning it. A big part of that is the, the native plant garden, which sits right behind the trailer today. So if you've been up there, there is some likelihood that you didn't even know the native plant garden existed because the trailer blocks it. Well, with the new plan, it will sit behind the open area. So now when you walk up to the visitor center, new education center, the education center will be off to the right, the pavilion will be sitting in front of you. And through that, you'll see the nature garden or the native garden, and you'll see the mountains and the beautiful views of Mount Diablo. Next slide, please. There's a really important aspect about the new education center that I want to stress, and that's how we're building it. We're taking the time to make sure that it reflects environmentally, that it reflects our ability to use nat, the natural resources for both heat and for cool and for light to really help us project the way we want the education center to, to look. So you can see in this slide, the center has natural light advantages. It has an airflow planned. It allows us to naturally cool the building. Those kind of things. And we've also taken the time to make sure we develop a building that can be a footprint or a prototype for how to, to better prevent fire, fire risk. So those kinds of things are also being incorporated into the plans for the new education center. Next slide. So, there you have it. That's, that's, that's our vision. It's a $3 million vision, so we have our ways to go. I think Mike mentioned we are right around $700,000. That's since November, so we're doing really well. We're reaching out to communities like yourself, to corporations, to individuals, to try to raise this money. Next slide, please. So the real question is, how can you guys help us? That's kind of why we're here, to see if there's a way that we can interact and engage, pardon me, engage the city, the city council and the city, the community itself. There are a couple of ways that we think that can occur. And Kim has been very, very helpful. Thank you, Kim, for what you've done for us so far in helping get that word started. Share, share our project with the community in every way you can. Kim has already started to put some verbiage in her own newsletter that she sends out to constituents and we're so grateful for that because we know it's going to end up creating some, some donations for us. Inform businesses. Let individuals know what's going on to the degree you feel that you might have somebody in the community that you know that might be able to help us. We'd love those names. We'd love anybody that you feel you think might be engaged in our project or might, our project might resonate with them. We'd very much like to have those names shared. And we're happy to do the outreach. If it's, if it's, if it's okay with you, we'd love to use your name to do that. But anything you can do to help us kind of spread the word, that's what we're looking for, that, that opportunity. And with that, I'll, I'll open it up to any questions, if anybody has any. Mike? Yeah, for sure. Yeah, here, I'll let you pass those out. And I have some things for the audience as well. Anybody have any questions?
Is, is the three, thank you. Is the $3 million like your all-in cost or is that a financed amount?
So that is an all-in cost. We feel that there's kind of a, a couple of ways we could take it. One way would be to raise the full $3 million and it could happen by grants that we could get from a variety of components, individuals, state, whatever. The other would be to maybe divide it and do two different components. Maybe the outdoor component first and the indoor component later. We're still working through that.
Do you have a timetable goal?
Well, we're, we're hoping to raise a million dollar by the end of the year, the end of the calendar year. And if we reach that level, then we'll probably start, we're going to start the architects on design. They only did conceptual drawings. But we're starting the architects in June on moving forward with actual schematics and construction drawings. So, if we have their million and we're ready to go and we haven't landed anything else, then we'll probably split it. And this is me talking off the top of my head. We'll probably split it and do the outdoor pavilion first and get that going and then try to get the balance of it raised, you know, for the visitor center itself, the ed center. The pavilion is probably like a million of that $3 million. And then the ed center is about $2 million. But we're actively pursuing, we're working with all the local legislators on state money. We're applying for state grants, private foundations. We've had a great response from individuals. One of our individuals gave $100,000 towards it. We have a local grant that gave another 50. We're announcing a challenge grant that's going to be announced Saturday for $80,000, one-to-one match. So, we're inspired by how it resonates with people. But, and we think we can get to a million dollars on our own, but to get to the three, we'll need some, some big bucks stepping in.
Thank you.
Sure.
Well, thank you both for being here, Gary and Mike. And we wish you lots of luck and we'll keep spreading the word and have a great event on Sunday.
Thank you.
That's right.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is Item 6, Reports from our City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. I just have a couple of things to report on. First, there is a budget audit committee meeting this Monday at 4:00 PM where we'll be discussing a first look at our fiscal year '24 budget. We'll also be looking at our updated fee schedule and where we are with that, our investment policy, as well as our five-year capital improvement program. So that'll be a, a good kickoff to the budget process, which is going to be robust this year. Secondly, I just want to mention that at Clayton Community Park, the new playground installation is coming along well. The port-in-place mat is supposed to be beginning this week and they hope to have everything completed by the end of next week. So that'll conclude that and then they'll be moving toward the Grove where we're going to be replacing the port-in-place mat at that place structure. And then finally, the biggest thing I want to report is the splash pad at the Grove Park is also in the process of being repaired after what I understand is a few years of being inoperable due to droughts and COVID and all kinds of things. We've ordered some parts and it's going to be repaired, so we're hoping by early May we'll have that up and running for the children in the community to enjoy. Thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you. There are no public hearings, so next on the agenda is action items. The first is, I'm, I'm very happy to say is an auth, is an item to authorize the mayor to execute the City Manager employment agreement. Is there any, would you like to kick us off?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Before you is an employment agreement for your new city manager Brett Prebola. I hope I'm pronouncing that, Prebola? Prebola, pronouncing that correctly. You have been in the process of looking for a new city manager for the last several months and you have now found one and you have asked me to draft an employment agreement. The key terms of the employment agreement provide for a start date of May 15 of this year. It is a three-year term. The salary is $228,000 with a car allowance and a techno, tech allowance as well. And a little bit of background of Mr. Prebola is that he is currently the Assistant City, interim Assistant City Manager at the City of Benicia. And prior to that, he was the Finance Director at the same city. He has a broad background in local government, including municipal finance, budgeting, and IT. So with that, we are requesting that they, you authorize the mayor to execute the employment agreement. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? All right. I would open this up for a public comment. If there's any public comment, I will give you a chance to speak at the end. If there's anyone that has public comment, now's the time for that. Janet?
Mayor Juan, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Okay. Then I will close public comment. If there's any discussion that we'd like to have?
We're excited.
Okay.
We want to get to it. We're excited.
So I'm going to move approval.
Okay. Would?
I'll second.
Perfect. Janet, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Chupiano?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Clovin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Juan?
Hell, yes. All right. With that, Mr. Prebola, would you like to make any comments? And congratulations. You have to hit the button there. There's a button there and the red light will come on.
See, I already solved my first problem. Good. Just thank all of you. I, I am also very excited to get going. You know, my start date is until May 15, but I will be actively engaged and aware of what is going on between now and then. Just a few items to tidy up at the City of Benicia before I move on. You know, I'm most excited because I, you know, I got in this industry, as we talked about a little bit, to become a city manager, not to get a title, but to really change the way we do government, to kind of improve how staff is in organizations and then how
we deliver that service to communities. And I think it'll be a great opportunity to do it here, you know, to the community. You know, I'm really looking to have those community conversations. I'm looking to focus on our interests and not our positions. I believe this community has a lot of common interests, and when we get away from the position that we may individually feel uncertain things, I think that'll bring a lot of us together. And that is my goal, is to bring all of us together and find a path that continues the kind of work that's been done in this great community and continue to sustain that moving forward. And I look forward to meeting the staff, listening to the staff, you know, as I come in, and then working with your council on that strategic vision, and then getting it implemented moving forward. So, a lot of work to do, I know, and a lot of good stuff I know you all want to do. And so, can't wait to get here, excited. Ron and I had a great dinner and conversation already, and so I'll continue to do that between now and May 15th, and then we'll get here, and we will start the good work together. So, I thank you for the opportunity again, and just again to the community, staff, and you all, just very excited and really looking forward to doing some great things together. So, thank you.
Thank you. We're very excited and get a lot of rest.
I will.
Because we will, we will put you to work. It'll be awesome. So, thank you. All right. With that, I will move on to item B. This is resolution adopting salary schedule. Mr. Bernal?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This is, this item is in follow-up to the last one you just approved, the employment contract. CalPERS requires us to have an accurate and updated salary schedule at least annually, and with the new compensation for Mr. Prebola, this will, this will update the salary schedule accordingly. And so, we just ask that staff would, or excuse me, that the city council would authorize this, the approval of this new salary schedule, and the fiscal impacts of it will be reflected in the upcoming budget.
Excellent. Any questions from council? All right. I would open this up for a public comment, if there's anyone that has comment on this.
Mayor Juan, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
All right. I will bring it back for any discussion. If not, then I would entertain a motion.
Move approval.
I will second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Chupiano?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Cloven?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Juan?
Aye. And with that, that passes. Okay. Next item on the agenda is item C, a report, a report on traffic speed strategy from our chief of police and city engineer. Would you like to?
I'll go, I'll go ahead and kick it off and introduce them. So, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. There has been talk ongoing, as in many communities, about the issues surrounding speeding and people not necessarily following all of the laws traffic-wise, and so the police chief and our city engineer prepared a report to update you on what we're doing currently and what we propose to do related to the areas of traffic enforcement, specifically in the area of speeding. And so, with that, I think I'll turn it over to our police chief first, Chief McKeechen, and then he'll be followed by our city engineer, Larry Thies, who can go into some of the traffic engineering side of things. So, chief?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As we've discussed over the last several meetings, we've started to make traffic a priority. It's always been a priority, but when you get sidetracked or you get short-staffed or things like that, it can kind of get away from you. But we're circling back around, we're reprioritizing that. For the first time, at least that I know of, and I've been around here for quite a while, we're actually going to have a dedicated traffic officer starting May 1st, and we're really looking forward to that. He's actually completed his training to get sort of, to get his motorcycle license endorsement, so he's ready to start training once May 1st happens. The reason we had to wait until May 1st is just for shift change. We didn't want to start adjusting other people's schedules and kind of messing everything up. So, that is set to go into effect. Part of his responsibilities will be to deploy the two radar trailers that we have in different neighborhoods so that he can educate the public on, a lot of people don't even realize we're speeding, so it's a good way to educate them and let them know how fast they're actually going. We also, for years, we've put out the decoy car, and we'll continue to do that. It looks just like the regular patrol cars, so I even drive by and wave at it sometimes on my way to work because you can't tell if someone's in it or not. So, that's always been a positive tool as well. This morning, I went up to Keller Ridge, and the speed sign up there, I'm not sure because I've been gone for several years, I don't know how long it's been out, but I reset it today, and it's working again today. I used to have to periodically go up and reset it because for some reason the breaker trips on it. So, my goal is to get that converted to solar, and I hope maybe we can get that wrapped into the ClimatTech project, if it's not too small of a thing for them to do. But I'm hoping that that, pulling that away from hardwired power will solve the problem of it tripping and going off. But at any rate, it's working now. On my way here today, I drove back by again just to make sure it was working, and it's still working. So, it will show the speed that the person's driving. When no one's there, just a speed limit, 25, all digital, you guys have probably all seen it, but I'm not, again, I don't know how long it's been out, but it's back on. So, it will show the speed, but once you hit a certain trigger speed, it just starts flashing and saying, slow down. So, I think that's a very effective tool, too, that was already there and just needs to be operational. Another thing that's come up recently, there's apps now that people can get on their phone, and it will actually alert you when there's traffic enforcement ahead so that people know there's radar being done and they can slow down. On one hand, it's a hindrance, but on another hand, it's actually helping us do our job because if people know that there's traffic enforcement ahead and they slow down, then we've accomplished what we wanted to accomplish anyway. So, the fact that that's happening is not really the worst thing in the world. I know it gets frustrating to the traffic officers that are out there trying to work radar, but we'll take what we can get. Any questions for me?
I just have two quick questions. Who is the officer that you've identified to be? Have you announced it yet?
Yes, Mitch Struski. He's been here for about four and a half years and.
Mitch Struski?
Yes.
Okay. And how many of those radar speed trailers, I don't know if I'm using the right terminology, do we have? Do we have several of those?
We have two.
We have two?
Yes.
So, we can always rotate those if we want to?
Yeah, you can pull them on a, they're on a trailer, so you can pull them by truck and deploy them in different areas. And they also are served as message boards, so you've probably seen them out for the event. We'll put them up and let people know that the downtown's closed on certain days, and so we deploy them for those as well.
Perfect. Thank you, chief.
Are we breaking this part up into two pieces? Okay, then I'll wait for my other questions.
Okay.
What are the two pieces?
The engineer piece, the traffic engineering piece.
Okay. The report is, just one report, though, so.
It is, but Larry hasn't spoken yet.
I know. Can, are you speaking on the vehicle code section?
Larry's going to speak on that. I will say that I, thanks to Janet, I found out that our old traffic engineer, our city engineer, all his files were still here and down in the storage. I went and dug through them today, and I found the speed surveys that we couldn't find that Larry's going to talk about, the vehicle code section that's changed that will allow us to use those speed surveys. We didn't have a copy anymore. I sent Jason to the court on Monday to see if they were there. They were not there either, but I found them today, so we'll be able to tackle that and move forward.
What was the date of the last date when that was done?
They were done in 2010, and then in 2015, there was an extension to 2020, but as Larry will explain, it can actually extend beyond that now.
I would say on the decoy car, if you don't park so well, then it makes it look less like a decoy.
I would say I parked it myself the other day, and I did a cockeye, and when I drove back by, man, I did a pretty good job parking that.
If you're perfectly straight, people will know it's a decoy, but if you're kind of off alignment, people will think someone's in there.
I agree.
I speak from experience. All right. So, thank you. I think, well, we may have more questions, but thank you for your presentation.
One last thing, since I'm up here, has nothing to do with this, but I noticed the coat racks have been moved over there. I don't know who's responsible for that, but thank you because I've noticed at the last meeting, it's kind of obstructing the AED.
It blocks the defibrillator?
Yes. And so, some people might not even know that was in here and should they need it. So, whoever moved it, thank you very much.
All right. Excellent.
But before you leave, chief, I got a question for you. You alluded to the fact we had already authorized the motorcycle. How long is it going to take the officer to get trained and ready to hit the road, so to speak?
The motorcycle's at the Concord Motorsports right now, getting a little checkup. It's getting its brake fluid changed, and the mirror was not, the cable that keeps it up was kind of limp, so they're replacing that. So, we should get it back next week. Once May 1st starts, then Sergeant Shaw, who's our traffic sergeant and has the other bike, will get out with Officer Struski and start having him ride around and get comfortable riding the bike. He can't technically enforce traffic on the bike until he's attended the post motor school, and the earliest one we could get him in is October. So, he's going to do a lot of training on the bike, but he'll be working traffic in a patrol car for the time being until he can go to motor school in October.
So, you don't anticipate till October, is that what you're?
For the motorcycle part of it, yes, but he will be doing.
Although you do have another officer that's trained?
Yes.
On the other motorcycle?
Yes, and he will be on his.
So, you could start that before October?
Correct. And we will.
Does this new motorcycle require any additional speed control devices on it, specifically radar? How are you going to operate the radar on it? Are you going to have a handheld unit?
Yes, handheld. So, Sergeant Shaw's going to fabricate, he fabricated on the other bike, a holder for it out of Nevada. He's going to do the same thing on this one so that he can set it in there as he's riding it, but yeah, it'll be handheld.
Back in the mid-'70s to early-'80s, we had a full-time traffic officer, and Clayton developed a reputation that you don't speed through Clayton. So, hopefully, we'll get back to some kind of reputational.
I agree. I used to hear that a lot when I would go to trainings and things. Oh, we don't drive, even the police officers would say, yeah, we tell our family, don't drive through Clayton because you'll get a ticket.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we want to get back to people saying that. Out of curiosity, back then, was it on a motorcycle or was it in patrol car?
No, he was in a patrol car.
Okay.
And he was very effective. Thank you.
And I know that you've been, you've been kind of moving towards, you know, more enforcement, as you mentioned in the beginning. Have you seen any change in behavior since that time, or is it too soon to tell?
I think it's too soon to tell, but I have noticed myself, because I commute in from East County, and I've noticed people are driving slower now than, I used to, people would be on you, and they couldn't wait to when it splits to two lanes so they can fly by you.
And it turns into a drag race?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
I'm going to ask a quick question now, and maybe it could be Larry, which will be a good segue for him, but the streets that are listed in this for where enforcement should take place, we had a gentleman here maybe about six months ago who complained about the speeding on Regency, and I know that Sergeant Shaw spoke to him after that meeting. I noticed that Regency is not listed in any of the collector roads. Is it possible that we can add that to this as well for one, for that street to be?
Yes, we can do that.
Looked at because he was very upset when he saw it was not listed in the agenda today?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, if he's watching, I apologize, we'll get that on there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thies?
Good evening, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to provide some supplemental information to this, you know, a pretty typical issue among cities. I was asked by the city manager to provide some additional traffic engineering elements to this staff report. I do believe enforcement is, you know, a very effective approach. Obviously, there's limitations to it, but in my, you know, research for this city, I am also, I'm aware that the city had already previously adopted a neighborhood traffic management program, which is an attachment to the staff report. I think that is pretty typical of a lot of cities to have a, this type of program where it's initiated through a neighborhood request. Most of these types of requests are generally in residential neighborhoods, maybe in downtown, but, for example, like Regency, Regency is probably still technically a residential street, so it stays at the prima facia 25 mile an hour. So, you know, getting into kind of the specifics, and I'll discuss the updates to the vehicle code, streets that are in a residential or business district default to the prima facia speed limit of 25 miles an hour. When you have a street that is of higher volume or more, multiple lanes, beyond one lane in each direction, has generally a higher volume, there's not a specific trigger, but, or are classified as collector arterial roads, then those are the streets that you need to perform a speed survey, and that's where we had talked about the expiration, how often you have to do it. But in this recent research, looking up the prima facia, I did come across that the assembly or the state actually updated the vehicle code, and it's actually very well timed for this community. I'm pretty sure it's very common in a lot of communities is that because of the way, you know, it's rare that the speed of cars are going down unless you're doing something very specific physically to the road, that a lot of communities are seeing the rise of the 85th percentile that sets where this speed limit can be enforced at. But there was a law passed a couple of years ago about creating safety corridors, and that's actually supposed to be kind of phased in in 2024. But that's very specific to like, specific accidents, you have to identify, there's a justification to call it a corridor, a safety corridor. I didn't believe anything so far in Clayton had qualified to that level, but then in January of this year, January 1st, basically, the new CBC code allows that you can maintain the existing speed limits as long as you had a valid survey at some point, and then as long as you codify it as an ordinance going forward, and it no longer requires that you continue to do the speed surveys as long as the road geometrics don't change. So, if you don't add another lane to the road, something major, then it can stay at sort of the deep, or the existing speed limit in perpetuity, or if the law changes, obviously. So, our plan at this point is to come back to the council with an ordinance and to make reference to this new CBC code for probably all this, all specific streets that I would imagine, and we'll probably, I will give the option to the council, if you want to still do surveys, you certainly could, but you could set it based off of the survey that was already being done. So, as the chief had mentioned, we need to find and make sure we have the valid survey for when it's set these speed limits. Some of these are pretty old, but I do believe we have all of the ones that are necessary. There's not, there's probably like 20, 25 because it's meant for collectors and arterial streets. So, that is our plan to bring that back and have that as part of an ordinance. I do want to make aware that the, that the city already has speed limits identified in its ordinance, which is pretty rare for cities. In this case, it actually probably works out because that's probably what we would do anyway. So, it will be updating that section of the ordinance where they identify certain speed limits. We can double-check if there's any streets that were not included in those ordinances. Most of them are listed in the staff report, but we'll double-check if there's any that are, would like to be added, you know, that's another option. We have to make sure there was a speed survey done. But if, if an area is essentially residential, has a lot of driveways, or is in a business district, those default to 25, and that doesn't change. So, that element of the code, we would still follow. It's more for arterials and collectors, which I think is the concern. I believe we have three streets right now where we have this issue. Clayton, Eagle Peak, and Mountair Parkway are the three that I'm aware of that we can ultimately address by using this latest update to the vehicle code. So, happy to take any questions specifically on the vehicle code or specific streets. And I think it's very fortuitous for this agency, and hopefully, I think many agencies that this law has been passed, so it comes at a very good time, and I'm glad I'm having to address this other ways. I think this is this relatively simple way. It's pretty much paperwork at this point, so, thank you.
Questions from council? I have several, but.
Well, the one question that I have, well, I've got two questions. One is, Larry, are you able to also just give us an update, too, on that kind of traffic calming pedestrian friendly project that we're, is being funded through Measure J and CCTA? And also, when we talk about education and outreach to the neighborhood, I just have a question around how we plan on doing that.
Sure.
That's it.
In regards to the project we're referring to, it's called the Downtown Pedestrian Improvements Project. That's funded $250,000 through Measure J TLC money, Transportation Livable Communities. It's a subset of Measure J that's administered through CCTA. Those funds are, and then we did get an additional grant of another twenty thousand dollars through TDA. That was an application we submitted back in January. We got half of what we requested. They will be funding basically new speed tables at crosswalks along with rapid flashing beacons for notifying drivers that someone is going to be crossing the street. So you have a push button and then these are solar powered so that they would, you know, you've seen them probably around town. They have the yellow, two rectangular, yellow flashing lights. That currently, because we're waiting on some of the grant funds to be programmed, that will probably be constructed in the fiscal twenty-four year. So we're either this fall or early spring next year. And then in regards to the traffic management program, I, I've used a very similar program. And most are very, they go progressively in types of the level of sort of fixes. And usually it starts with enforcement and outreach and education. In the case of the Regency gentleman, we have approached putting in some additional signage. And you know, that'd be kind of of a level two measure. But more so putting out information in the community or in the neighborhood, either a letter or, you know, next door would be a, a pretty good approach as well, usually because you can define certain areas. And it helps remind folks in those particular cases, if it's your neighbor that's driving through too fast. Now, that particular case, it could be people from out of town going up to, you know, utilize the trails. But, so that's why we wanted to use the signage in certain spots. So those are the kind of elements that I've seen. Now, I, I think the program is meant to be a collaborative process with the neighborhood. Sometimes there's cases where someone feels there's a lot of speeding and other people don't. And so that's why I think this program outlays how that process would be handled, you know, through both, you know, an outreach process, collaboration, and also a voting process as well.
Thank you.
Can I ask an additional question on the flashing lights for the Measure J funds? Where exactly will those go?
So the, the two main intersections are across Marsh Creek Road at the northeast corner of the Grove Park Parcel, where you have the trail coming in on the east side. And then the free right turn that comes southbound off Marsh Creek onto, I think, Main Street. That will be raised as well. So that way, it's meant to, it's meant to be a pedestrian permit, but i- in effect, it also is a speed reduction element because you're providing, you know, basically a speed table or a speed bump there. And the other location is off of Oak Street, right where the sidewalk and trail comes down off of where it comes off Clayton and down from the school. There's going to be a cross, additional crosswalk place there just north of the intersection to line up with where the little pedestrian bridge crosses the creek and then into the business district.
Any possibility to put one at the end of, I just forgot the name of the street, Morris Street, as it crosses from, crosses over Center Street?
That is on the, what, the southwest side of the park?
It would be.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a business there right in that area.
There is, and the kids just dart across the street and there've been several near misses there from people who were turning onto Morris from Center and vice versa, if they don't see the kids darting out from, running from the park in front of Grove Side Bistro, crossing the street towards the post office. Even just a flat, there's already a, a crosswalk there. It's a different color than the street, but flashing maybe.
Typically, what I've seen is, and I don't recall this intersection off the top of my head, but if it is already stop controlled, you tend not to put the flashing beacon. I mean, it's meant to be for uncontrolled.
It's in uncontrolled intersection.
So that, that's probably a more fitting place, you know, that's why when I look at these situations that if it's already stop controlled and it sounds like it's not, then, you know, you, you tend not to use as much because it's already meant for people to stop. But this is now helping people know, hey, I know you're not supposed to stop, or you don't have to stop, but someone's here. So we could look at that location as well.
Thank you.
So I had a few questions. The NTMP, how, when was the last time that any action was taken under the NTMP? Are we aware, you may not have the history, but it, it sounds like the, the program has been in existence for many years. But I can't recall the last time that anything has been taken under that program?
Yeah, based off of my own research, right, it looks like this was adopted in oh-three. In my, you know, observations of the, the engineering file, I did not come across any active or even recently active requests through either the Harris records or the, the Permco records. So I can't say for certain when was the last time one has occurred, but I can probably safely say it hasn't. A formal request, informal process probably has not happened in at least several years, is my guess.
Okay. And is it more of like a guideline for folks who want to make this request rather than a controlling document that if this request is made, then the city is obligated to take some action? Because it does kind of list out things that could be done, but not necessarily must be done. Is, is that your interpretation?
I think in any of these programs, it gives some framework. But I've always approached these as any time an element that requires something to, at least to the signage or striping level, it should come to the city council. Some, you know, I, I've dealt with many of these types of requests in my former agency. And there was a whole separate traffic safety committee that processed them because they were, in this particular city, it was probably like five or six active at a time. But I, I would say, in the end, the city council decides, you know, how they want to pursue it. Now, if there are elements that we should update, you know, this is a twenty-year-old document. It might be a good opportunity to, you know, make sure we're all on the same page as to what the council wants, you know, in, in terms of how much leeway given to staff, what elements should be discussed. Like, you know, some, some cities don't want speed bumps at all, right, as an example. So it wouldn't even be put into, you know, your traffic management program as an option. You don't even want to have the neighborhood request it. So, you know, that could be something, you know, twenty years later, most of these elements are pretty similar. I don't think there's been any life-changing things that would affect this document, you know, from an engineering standpoint. But, you know, from a policy standpoint, certainly you can decide what would be appropriate this time. You know, I, I've, what I've seen is if you have physical measures that usually have the most impact and the most effectiveness, like a speed bump or maybe even a flashing speed radar sign, there's always drawbacks to that, right? Someone who lives next to the speed bump has to hear the cars go over it. Who lives near the flashing at night sees the orange glow. And so, you know, I always try to, you know, decide or to work with those folks who are directly impacted the most. And I've seen other programs where those particular proprietors would have to agree to it. Like there's a veto power of it, like even though there's, the street as a whole wants it, but if that particular person who lives within X number of feet, forty feet, won't agree to it, they can have a veto power. And it can obviously cause issues because no one wants it in their house, in front of their house, but they want it as a whole. So those are other elements. I would happy to, you know, there's many cities that have this type of program. And you could take other elements from it and we could update it if that's something the council desires.
Okay. Because I, I do recall that I think in the latest report that we received, there was a discussion about a request from the Dana Hills area regarding modifying their Mountair Parkway from two lanes down to one lane.
Four to two.
Oh yeah, sorry. One from two lanes in each direction to one lane in each direction. That would be an action that would, as you mentioned earlier, change the engineering of the street, I'm assuming, right? And, but it would reduce, it would serve to reduce it. So would we still fall, would that still qualify as essentially a residential neighborhood even more so then? And then we would be under the prima facie?
You can probably make that case. I, I, I think if you, you know, Mountair Parkway, there's fronting homes along that stretch. I think what really triggers it is the four lanes. So if, you know, without getting the cart before the horse, that particular element, I've been made aware that the HOA has put in the request. But I did ask the HOA, please survey your members because, you know, you as a board might be okay with it, but who knows how many people. And then obviously the community as a whole. So that's why we started this process slowly introducing the, the idea. Now, this is not, that road is now scheduled to be repaved in twenty twenty-four. So we do have time. It's meant to have a surface treatment on top. So that striping will be eliminated when we, so you can re-stripe however you want to. Our original, our current intention is to just replace as is. And unless there's a change, which I figure this is an element we would bring to the council when we approve the plans, that everyone is on board and then the community has been properly notified. And if they would like to come and, you know, speak to the issue, they have an opportunity to, before we agree to move forward. That's not something I would take lightly and just change the striping, you know, as part of just a plan. I, I recognize that many people would be concerned. Maybe some people like it, some people wouldn't.
Because right now, I believe the, the posted limit on that street is thirty miles per hour. And so if we went down to one lane with several homes fronting on it, I guess my question is, would we then not need to, would, would we be able to reduce the speed limit to twenty-five? Because it would be single lane fronting.
Yeah, an engineering survey would still need to be done to basically make the declaration that it, it meets the residential district component.
Not a speed survey, but an engineering survey?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, you wouldn't, it, it, it would still be part of the traffic. The engineering traffic survey, that's, that's the name of it in the vehicle code and the manual of uniform traffic control devices. But that element, even when you do a speed survey, for example, and you determine eighty-fifth percentile, there are opportunities where you can round down based off of saying, you know, you have these criteria. There's a thirteen different criteria where most don't apply in most situations. But if you have a certain type of facility or something, you can then round down another five miles an hour. So in this particular case, it would be similar. It's not the rounding out of five mile an hour. You're making the case that it's a residential district at that point. And it, it would operate with, you know, basically a one lane in each direction. Now, without getting too far ahead, I think the, the intention would be to put some kind of bike lane or some center, center lane into Mountair Parkway because, because you have all the driveways, anyone who wants to make a left into their driveway will stop all the traffic. Right now, you have two lanes, people move past each other. So if you, you provide a center lane, then at least someone can have a refuge area to pull in and out because of how wide the road is.
Okay, thank you. The, the change in the law that says that we could use a previously certified, is it, was that the right word, certified survey? What is the period, the lookback period on that?
Yeah, that I, I originally, when I looked at it, I thought it was going to be fourteen years. So when I wrote this staff report, that was the conservative approach. Now, as I've done a little bit more research, it's probably possible as long as it was, it has not changed since that, the, you know, survey. And maybe it is beyond fourteen years. I think you can probably make the case. There, there was two components is that if you still had to do surveys, now you can extend it up to fourteen years. So that was one component, which when I first read it, I thought was what still had to apply. But it may not have to apply to that situation. We'll make sure that when we reference the, the vehicle code, that that fourteen-year rule isn't applicable for the situation where we're keeping the existing. So I think we will be fine. But at the time when I was writing this, we're, you know, trying to get some legal opinion on it and making sure that we understood it correctly. I wanted to be somewhat conservative. So at, at the very least, if you're, within the fourteen years, you know, that, that's now extended, but I think it can go beyond that as well.
Okay, so then we'll get more information on that. But you can use the status quo, even if a newer survey would indicate something different, as long as you have not yet changed?
That's the way I interpret it, yes.
Okay. And for how long, given under the current rule, are you allowed to extend that status quo? Earlier, you mentioned in perpetuity. So did I understand you, did I hear you correctly?
The way the, the law reads, as long as there's no change to the geometrics of the road, you can maintain it at its, you, it was two components. You can't reduce it more than five miles an hour, which isn't the, the issue here. Or you can't, you have to keep it at existing and it has to, and as long as you keep it at that, that particular speed limit that's already posted, then the way it is, is in perpetuity unless the law changes or the geometrics change.
Okay, that's great. I'm very glad that we did not elect to change the speed limit back in twenty nineteen when this came before us, so that's awesome. You also mentioned that an ordinance needed to be passed in order to memorialize this adopt, or essentially like maintaining the speed. Does that need to happen prior to enforcement of those exist, of those posted limits?
Yeah, I think it, if, if you were challenged in court, that would probably be the issue. So we do want to do this relatively quickly. The, right now, in the, the new section, it does make reference, it has to be done by, via ordinance. And like I mentioned, the city already has an element in its ordinance that addresses this. So we'd be updating that section and making reference to that vehicle code at this point.
What is the soonest that you could bring back an ordinance so that we could put this into effect?
I mean, I think it, it would be.
That is reasonable.
I, I think it could certainly by the May, the second meeting in May. Yeah, I, I know that we can do it by then. I would be a little pressed to do it by the May second meeting, the next one. But I do think we could do it within a month. Because I want to make sure we attach all the appropriate, or reference all the appropriate speed surveys. And then like any ordinance, obviously, I think you, you still need to come back twice.
Two readings. So the first readings is potentially the second meeting in May?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's great. All right. Well, that's, that's all my questions. Do you have additional?
I do. I just wanted to ask one more about this new law. Because I keep looking at the, the verbiage that's in our packet. And it reads, if local authority, after completing an engineering and traffic survey, finds that the speed limit is still more than is reasonable or safe, the local authority may by ordinance retain the currently adopted speed limit, et cetera. So you just mentioned that we did not adopt one in twenty nineteen?
We did not adopt a new one.
A new one in twenty nineteen, which means we revert to the old one. And I think earlier I heard the years were twenty-ten, possibly twenty-fifteen, there was an extension, and maybe something else happened in twenty-twenty. And so if we're going back to twenty-ten, the speeds that we have, the speed limits that we currently have posted, we already know are probably too low and people are already speeding. So my question is, it reads, if local authority, after completing an engineering and traffic survey, et cetera, do we still need to do right now a new survey on those streets before we can adopt a new, an ordinance?
Yeah, I do believe we would do a, not an actual speed radar survey, but we would make an engineering finding that, the, the case that the current speed limit is reasonable.
Okay.
Now, I would say, you know, most of the streets are already in compliance with the pre-two thousand twenty-three CVC. It's really a matter of like a handful of streets at this point. That as the mayor mentioned, I believe Harris did a study in twenty twenty timeframe. And there were three, there were four streets that were not accepted because it would raise the speed limit. We did do a subsequent speed survey for the segment of Clayton Road from Oakhurst to Mitchell, Mitchell Canyon. And that one did come down lower, so that one. Mitchell Canyon. And that one did come down lower. So that one, we would probably reference the latest survey as the sort of current standard. And then if, you know, this is the council decision, if you'd like to basically then hold all of those, then that would be the case. And we should make, we need to make now reference to all these specific streets, which most of them are covered in the current ordinance. If there are any there missing that we should address that in the ordinance now.
Okay, thank you.
I believe that Harris study was 2019, if I recall, in that
Yeah, that timeframe.
May-ish timeframe. Any other questions from council?
Yes. You mentioned, and excuse me if I have to have you repeat something you already talked about, that there is, you determined that you can leverage off of the 2003 traffic study. Is that correct?
Well, there's, there's various speed surveys over time. So we would find whatever the latest current one is.
Okay. Well, what I'm at is if you, if it was decided to do another traffic survey, would it have to be a complete one? Or could you pick things out of the past one to use without having to redo everything?
I think the intention would be is if the survey, we find a survey, even though maybe it's 14 years old or even whatever amount of time. But we find that it was done and it was done, you know, reasonably. And that the recommendation or the 85th percentile number at that time matches the current speed limit that's posted out in the field, which I don't believe any have changed in 20-plus years. Then we would make reference to that speed survey, even though it's old, but we would make reference to it via this vehicle code, referencing, this was a valid survey from X date. And it still matches the existing speed limit that's posted. We would make sure, we would make reference that it's reasonable speed limit still today, that there has been no changes to the geometrics. And, you know, just doing a Google map search of all these streets, there's nothing, Mountair Parkway was four lanes, you know, 20 years ago when it was built, and, you know, 30-plus years ago. So none of these have had geometric changes that I'm aware of.
Okay. And finally, relative to this, this survey, it is specifically aimed and targeted at speed?
In terms of setting the speed limit, yes.
Speed limits, okay. It shouldn't impact failure to stop for a stop sign, failure to stop for a traffic signal, and any other kind of so-called moving violation other than speed should not be necessary to be laid upon this. Thank you.
No changes.
Okay. I would open the item up. Thank you very much for the information. I would open it up for public comment. If there's anyone that has comment on this item, please offer it. Janet, do we have anyone online?
Mayor Juan, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Okay, then I will close public comment. And I do not think that we need a motion on this item. If there's any further discussion, I would just say I, I'm encouraged by the, by what we've heard. And I'm, again, I am very glad that in 2019, we did not choose to accept the speed survey, knowing that it did create some challenges for enforcement. But I think it was right for the community. And I think this is fortunate. And I, it's odd that this law had come and we didn't really get, I would imagine this affects many cities, but we didn't hear a lot about it because it seems pretty important. But regardless, so I would encourage staff and our engineer to proceed with haste and bring it back as soon as possible. So thank you. With that, that is, that concludes item C. And we will move on to item D. This is approved funding appropriation for ARPA funds. Our interim city manager would like to kick us off.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This item's coming back to you, following up on our April 4th city council meeting where we initiated a discussion. And even goes back further than that to our March 13th goal-setting session when we first talked about some of the different department ideas on how they could increase efficiencies in, in doing their work. And so this is the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act funds. The City of Clayton initially received 2.9 million, a little bit more than 2.9 million dollars in two tranches of this money. We currently have 1.466 million dollars remaining of this money. It is currently sitting in the general fund reserve is where this money is right now. And so the staff has gone back and prioritized four specific items for the council's immediate consideration, as well as getting some more input from the city council on whether they want to take some items off the list, or have us go back and do some more research and bring them back as part of the full budget process. So the four items are a video surveillance system at city hall for almost $8,000, a tattletale traffic signal lights for six intersections for about $2,600, a ditch witch vacuum trailer for $100,000, and a flatbed trailer for $10,000. So the total amount of these four items is $126,400 of the 1.466 million dollars. So if the council were to approve these, these items, it would reduce the fund balance to 1,340,107. So I'd open it up to the city council for you to consider, consider these items and then to provide staff with, if council wants to approve this tonight, there is the ability through the way the staff report is written for you to make this expenditure authorize it. And then provide any further direction on how you'd like us to proceed with the balance of the, of the items in the ARPA funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Just doing some quick math, I think the actual total of the four items comes to 121,090. There's a $5400 difference between the total versus what you have written, I believe, in the fiscal impacts. Just wanted to just tighten that up a little bit if that, if there is a correction needs to be made. The question I had was regarding the ditch witch and trailer. Is there a formal quote that has been received for that? Do we know that that is the final cost?
We have received a formal quote. Jim, it came in right around that cost, didn't it? Yeah, correct. It is at the 100,000, 100,000, $1,600. So that is an actual quote.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, if you have questions, now is the time.
Back to the, under the police department, there, I'm still confused. On the first page that we have, page two, we have a vehicle in there for $70,000. And that's the CERF for the police vehicle replacement. Yet in the wish list, it's 85,000. What's the difference?
So I think this, this references what was already spent from prior. And then the wish list is for the upcoming vehicle. And I think if we, if we look at this list here, the item, there's four line items that are bolded. And that's what Mr. Bernal was talking about. This is a, this provides a summary, the page two of the agenda for those following along, provides a summary of what was already spent. So this is what was already spent. And then this is, is the prioritized request for what?
Okay, because in, in the past, we have never approved up to $85,000 for a fully-equipped vehicle. It's always been in the 50 to 60,000 rate. Have they gone up that much?
Unfortunately, I think the answer is yes.
Is it? Okay. No need to answer. I'll, I'll take it on separately. Thank you.
And again, it's just these four items, correct? Two from maintenance, two from the police department?
Correct.
And is the reason for that because we have additional information from staff on those items and no additional items that we have more information for? Why only those four?
Those, correct. We do have specific information on those four items. And those were seen as the four highest priority items that we wanted city council to consider, again, for appropriation, if that's your, that's your desire.
Staff wanted us to consider those four?
The mayor, the mayor brought this forward to the staff to bring forward.
Thank you.
All right. I would open this up for public comment. If there's anyone that would like to make comment on this, please, now is the time. Janet, do we have anyone online?
Mayor Juan, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Okay. Sorry, my computer is disconnected, so I have to do the multi-factor authentication again, or else it kicks me out. So anyways, okay, cool. Well, then I will close public comment and bring it back for discussion. Yes, as Mr. Bernal mentioned, I did ask for these four specific items. And I think these ones represent a different flavor than some of the others that staff had requested. Some of the other items that staff had requested, I do think are also very important. However, they would take time to flesh out, both in terms of resources as well as like implementation time. So while I do think, well, I'd like to do a couple of things. And these, the ones that were identified here specifically, I think do not have, I mean, we have estimates for them or quotes, let's say. And the cost is well-known. These are, one of, a few of them are off-the-shelf products. And some of them are, you know, they don't require specific expertise or configuration to do. We just acquire them and we can start using them. So I thought those are a different flavor than the others. They also, you know, in hearing our maintenance supervisor describe the utilization of these, I think they provide an immediate benefit that both increase our efficiency, so our ability to do even more, which I will, we will be asking you to do even more. And then at the same time, reduce potential for injury, which I think that these, these types of devices do. So I, I want to say that the comments that you made at our previous meeting, I'm referring to our maintenance supervisor, were, I found them compelling. And so that, that is why I, I asked for these to come forward. And then regarding some of the police items, I think that these items are things that we should just have as a matter of course. And the fact that we do not have security cameras in our police office seems like something we should rectify. And so that was, I was hoping to see the secured entrance items, or item on here as well. So I don't know if you, if you had sufficient time to receive a proper quote. But if you did not, then I would encourage you to do so. And then come back, because I think that is also something that is very important to the operation of the city as well. So, and then, you know, we can talk about some of the other individual items. I did communicate with our city manager regarding certain priorities. Unfortunately, I'm not a big fan of the drone program. But, but I think it was a, it was a good pitch. So that was, that was my comments here. And then, you know, I did, on some of these items, you know, the things that I thought that I would ask from, in my view, would I would ask staff to take the time to get a more robust project plan and proposal that considers both the level of effort, the cost, and who is actually going to be doing the work, kind of deliverable, basically what you would expect in a real project plan. You know, the, the items from community development, the GIS items and the permit management software, I thought were both very valuable and something that I would like to pursue. But I think we need more information. And that will be a function of your time. So you, you kind of have to manage that. In finance, the portal for business license and renewal, I thought was also, would be very useful for the city. But again, we, we need more information on that. We talked about the police items already. You know, we're going to have to work in the vehicle because I think that our vehicle acquisition practice is essentially one vehicle per year. So, you know, I'm interested in continuing that as well. And then the agenda management software as well, I think is also very important and useful in terms of workload management. I think what doesn't get, what doesn't get as much visibility is the amount of effort and staff time it does take to prepare agendas in the way that we do them. And I believe that this tool will help do that. And so again, I believe it will add efficiency of which I will, we will, as a council, consume with other items for you to do. So if I, if we make you more efficient, we will then request more work. So that'll, that's good for us. But I would also, I would, I would strongly recommend that you look at the more common software that is used from other cities, just so that we have some parity. And I think that there's value there. Plus, you know, some of the things that were mentioned involved overlap with existing capabilities that we have already. And so I'd, I'd want to make sure that we flush that out. So for those items, I think we do need to have those flushed out more. But I would encourage staff when, when they're able to come back with an actual plan and work with the city manager to do that. So those, those are all of my comments.
I would say, yes, if you hadn't mentioned it, mine was the Re-Keen City Hall, the security around that. I think if you can bring us back a quote immediately, that'd be great. And then others, on top of what the mayor mentioned, that were, I felt were important as well for the staff are the salary surveys, since we know that they are some of the lowest paid in our region. I think that we need to have real figures for, for this day and age versus our competitors. So I would say a salary survey, I know that that's going to take time, but that's something that possibly our, our new city manager can take on once he's on board. In addition to, for the finance department, I think all of the, the items that the finance department requested are of importance. I know that that's going to take time. One, she's new, but, but two, just to develop it and do the training, et cetera. But I would still like a real quote on those. That doesn't have to be immediately, but those are ones that I'm also interested in. Let's see. As well as the permit software. I do know that our community development director has a small team. And I have to say to all the staff, given the amount of people that we do have working outside of the police department and the maintenance crew, thank you guys. Because I think the interim city manager and I count it six of, six of y'all, maybe who were doing all of the work for the city, for 11,000 people. I don't know how many people are online right now, but I want that to resonate with everyone. There are six staff members who are working on behalf of the city, aside from the PD and the maintenance department. And so I would like everybody to cut them some slack and give them grace and realize that they are working their tails off. They have been understaffed and overworked. And I think that the salary survey will go hand in hand with compensating them the way that they should be compensated for the work that they're doing. So those were the items that I have. Let's see, I think that was all of them. And I know, I'm saying that because I know this is going to take extra work for you guys to go do the digging. So as you can incorporate that and then bring it back to us as soon as you can, that'd be great. But no, I don't want to tax you any more than you already are. I think that that was, I'm not saying I don't want any of the others, that they have to be lopped off of the list. But as far as priority, excuse me, those are the ones that came top of mind for me in addition to what the mayor already said.
I just want to say I concur. I think these are immediate needs. And when time allows, we'll look at those other proposals. But we know that many of the items on here are very important. So as soon as you can get those estimates, we're ready to review them.
This is a lot better than the $600,000 ask that was last meeting. It's a lot more palatable to me. I really appreciate our maintenance supervisor, Mr. Warburton, bringing this to us. I understand that this is going to be an incredible value to you and your team, both from a health and safety standpoint and from a efficiency standpoint. And with all the water breaks, line breaks we have, it's going to be amazing. And I'm looking forward to having that be available to you as a tool. But like I said at the last meeting, we've got some pretty big, larger financial issues to look at beyond this. So looking at a less than 10% bite of the apple on our ARPA funds, which has been deemed by one council member as part of our reserves, I'm which has been deemed by one council member as part of our reserves, I'm okay with this. But we have to look at a much bigger picture of what our financial needs are. With the organizational survey that was, that was put out to us a couple of months ago, our goal-setting meeting, we have four FDEs to consider out how we might be able to pay for that in the future. And how that, bring those people on will support our staff. And then we had to figure out how we're gonna support our staff that exists that are being paid well under the city standards from other local agencies. So with that, plus a half million dollars for creek repair, plus potential financing for our climate tech portion if we don't get the 1% loan. There's a lot of significant financial concerns we have in the city. And while I'm okay with approving this portion of, of the ARPA funds, we've got to look at a much bigger picture before we spend it much more of anything else. We really need to look at all the priorities, put everything on the, on the table, and then start separating it. This is our priority, this is our secondary, this is our tertiary, this is our, we need to do that. And we can't do that in this meeting, we need to do another goal-setting meeting. We do not have goals, this city council, which is accountable for the year 2023. Our last goal-setting meeting had 20 items or something like that that were put out, thrown out there. I want to have four strong goals, this is what we're gonna do this year. And we need to have another goal-setting meeting, and we need to have it in short order, because we have a budget, it's gotta be passed in, in June. We need to look at the whole picture. And I've said this before the last meeting, and I'll say it again, we got large concerns. Let's talk about it as a council and figure out what our priorities are. That's where I am.
And Brett, how soon are you ready to help us with that? I know you're starting May 15th, but we, do you want to address that?
So luckily, I have a lot of experience in looking at the larger financial picture. You know, I think we can hit the ground running on potentially finding a place to have, you know, I think a conversation, I, I think it's important to distinguish between goal-setting and strategic planning, right? The two are not the same. And so I think having a goal-setting conversation that quickly can be achievable. If that's the council's desire, having a strategic planning session, I'd want to do that maybe more towards the summer, when I can have a little time to plan with all of you all and have a broader philosophical conversation. But goal-setting, you know, I, I can talk with Ron offline in the coming weeks and get some dates with you all that are convenient for all five of you to plan. What I'm gonna say is gonna be at, at least a need for three or four hours of your time to really have a fruitful conversation, because I, I want to be able to sit with staff in each of the, the functional areas, really understand the broader sense of what we're talking about, to, to your point, a council member, and then sit down with the finance director and understand to the best I can that quickly, kind of the financial picture and what I see that maybe five-year forecast, back of the envelopes, might look like. And then come to you with some realistic ideas for you to then set out on the goals and the resources that you have that make those achievable. I think finances are one thing, people are another. And both have to be considered when we have that conversation, and I want to be able to do that in a very fruitful way. So I'm gonna go on a limb and say, I can think I can get it done in May for, before our June budget conversation. But I'll work with Ron to see if your schedules allow for that to be a reality more than anything else. Does that help with the question, council member? Okay.
No, thank you.
One of the reasons why we, I think we delayed in the second round of the goal-setting was anticipating your arrival, so.
I appreciate that. I think for me, it's more being able to listen to staff. You know, I, I want to give them the respect of the times they've had here. And my job when I first come in, in the first 30, 60, 90 days, is to deal with low-hanging fruit. But to listen, listen to you and listen to them and listen to the community. And so I just want to make sure I give enough time to have that before I dive right in and, and, you know, I don't want to advise you on a misstep. But, but I do believe, you know, a, a goal-setting with what is known today by the end of the May is, is still, is realistically achievable. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, I think that is, there is no more discussion, I think.
Mayor, excuse me if I might.
Sure.
Would there, I, I've heard a, a strong desire to see the security at the building as far as the rekeying is concerned. Would it be possible to set a $15,000 budget for that? And if it is under that, that would be authorized? And if it's over that, we'd bring it back to you? Is that something, or do, do you be considered?
When you say rekeying, are you using that in a general sense? Because I, I, I think we were, I think I had the impression that it was more than a physical rekeying, that it was an access control.
Correct. When I, when I, I use the wrong terminology. Yeah, it's, it's an automated access control that, as the chief had mentioned earlier, would allow us to know who's coming, who's coming in and out of the building, when, and turn, it would be able to be turned on or off depending on whether we want people in or out of the building. So it would be that type of a system that we're, we would be looking at, in which the chief has already done some research on. So we think it's in the $10,000 range, but if we could have a little more leeway.
As an all-in cost?
As an all-in cost, if we could keep it, say, $15,000 or less, just to make sure that if it's $10,001, we're, we don't have to come back again.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. So I think we need a motion. So I would, I would move that we, that we authorize the spend for the four items that were listed in the agenda, as well as up to a maximum of not to exceed $15,000 for the access control provisions for City Hall.
No, I was gonna bring up the access control, that's very important.
So I'd, I'd make that motion, that we do that, and then also.
But I think he hasn't said his piece, maybe he has others, is that it? Okay.
Make sure that got added in there.
Okay.
And then I would also add comment that, for the items that we discussed, I would encourage staff to, when they're able, at their, at their, you know, when they, when they have the time to work towards putting together a more robust project plan, so that we can review them.
I still second.
And comes under to one second. So Janet, if you would, please call the roll.
Councilmember Chupiano?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Cloven?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Juan?
Aye. And with that, that closes item D. Hopefully, I will no longer see three people chest-deep in a hole digging with shovels for three days. Okay, because if they really like digging, I have plenty of digging in my yard that needs to get, just mess with. I use a jackhammer, and I recommend that to anyone around. That's the best way to dig. Okay, so next item is item E. This is provide direction on whether to appropriate additional ARPA funds for local assistance program, Clayton Cares, and whether to modify the amount allowed per grant recipient. And interim city manager, if you would kick us off.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. I'm not gonna rehash the introduction about ARPA funds, but the, the question here tonight is whether or not the, the city council wants to consider authorizing additional money towards the Clayton Cares Local Assistance Program. There was $800,000 authorized in the first round of funding, which went towards businesses and families in need. And so in order for us to, in our preparation of our budget, to understand whether or not this is something council wants to pursue further or not, we're hoping for some direction tonight on what, what council's desire is related to this program and the remaining 1 point, less than 1.466 now, after what you just authorized. So I'd like to give that to the city council for your discussion and, and direction, please.
Thank you. Questions from council? All right, then I will open this up for public comment. If there's anyone that would like to make comment on this item, now is the time. Janet, do we have anyone online?
I do have one hand raised. Larry, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Can you hear me now?
Uh, yes, please go ahead.
Okay. Well, I'm glad we got to this point. So here we are, guys. I do agree on the last items that you guys voted for, I think it's extremely important. And once again, I do support what the funds could be used for outside of helping the small, uh, uh, not just the small businesses. I know the city of Clayton is dire need for some other things going on. At this point in time, based off of the $800,000 that went out to several things, this was more focused to individuals. You know, an example for me as a business owner, and I've said this in the past, is that there was more to a loss for me compared to individuals that work at different locations and different businesses. So for me as a business owner, I was highly affected by COVID. I had to leave the location where I was at, move into a new location, finance money to remodel that location to move on with the business. I think a number of small businesses locally are still suffering. I mean, I know that, because we talk on a daily basis. So at this point in time, you know, it's up to you guys, you know? You guys get to make the decision. I think whatever you do to make a small decision to help the small businesses would be greatly, greatly appreciated. For me personally, I would use whatever funds that would come my way to market that and hire more people. That's another thing that everyone is suffering in any business, is just trying getting people to work. And that being said, it's just at this point in time, we are still struggling. Some of the small businesses, compared to some of the businesses downtown Clayton that are a little bit bigger and been around for a little longer, yeah, it's a different business compared to what I'm in. But at this point in time, I would just highly hope that we can come to some conclusion that, that you will consider something versus nothing. I do appreciate your time, I appreciate your guys' hard work, and, and have a good night and God bless.
Thank you. Janet, do we have anyone else online?
Mayor Juan, I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
I think, I think someone is still on the... Okay, excellent. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back for discussion. Is there any other items that you would like to discuss for this, or your thoughts?
If I may, based upon what we allocated or recommended for the other departments, which is about 130, but it could go up to 150,000. Is that correct, or am I math wrong?
Well, that was, I mean, for the prior item that we talked about, yeah, that was.
Because that's gonna be deducted from the 1.46, right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. What I'm heading to is, I just want to make sure that whatever we consider, there's gonna be about 1.3 and change left over after we expend or authorize the improvement expenditures for that, for the departments. I'm unclear at this point on how much we would want to consider allocating. I certainly would not want to add, you know, allocate the entire amount. We need to keep something in reserve for an unknown expenditure that would come up. So that's, I can't pick a number.
Okay.
And if there's only two or three people that would be interested, I mean, if we gave them, like last time, $10,000 per, you could do, you know, half a dozen of those without any problem at all. I, so that's my input.
I think I'm just going to say that at this juncture, I know the city and our staff has a lot of needs. And we need a healthy, vibrant city to keep moving forward. And so I think we, we, for me, it's a pause button at this moment to really do a deeper dive into what our needs are before we continue the Clayton Cares program at this juncture.
I would concur with councilmember Chupiano. It's unfortunate that we don't have all of our ducks in a row to be able to give an answer tonight. And if an answer had to be given tonight, and that's what really what we want to do, then my answer would be, then we wouldn't allocate any more money to Clayton Cares, as much as that's painful to have to say. Because I don't want any of the businesses struggling, I want to see them all succeed. But given the fact that I was a little bit perplexed by the individuals versus businesses, I get that he's saying that they're a business owner. But I also know that business owners had access to other federal funds during COVID. And there's only so much that we can do, we're also a business, and we also have to function. And right now, we are not, I won't say we're not functioning, but we, you can hear that we're band-aiding a lot of things. And I think that we, at, right now, we should be putting our staff and our business as a priority. And so we need to keep having these conversations on how we're gonna allocate these funds to make sure that we can have a functioning city hall, an efficient city hall, and also recruit and retain the staff that we have and that we need. So if we need to make a decision tonight, then mine would be to keep, keep our ARPA funds in-house for the needs that we need for our city. And if we are asked, if we're saying that we're gonna pause again, sure, but I don't think that those businesses are gonna be pleased with that answer. We need more answers as far as our overall budget picture. And that's where I was getting to at the beginning. It's unfortunate that we're not there yet to actually make a definitive answer on where everything is gonna go. I wish we were there tonight.
It's tough. A year ago, when we were giving out the $800,000 in Clayton Cares, we had a very clear vision of what we were trying to do to help those who are severely damaged by COVID, whether it be individuals or businesses. And we hopped on it so quickly and efficiently and got that $10,000 out to anybody who applied as fast as possible. I think we were very, very efficient in the way we did so and got that done. But quite frankly, in the past year, we've learned that we have a lot of really significant financial needs. And some of them are going to be necessary to be looked at as having ARPA funds help with that. When we look at the creek repair and, and the Cardnet Trail, where is that half million dollar plus gonna come from? When we look at potential financing of our climate tech project, where is that finance coming up when we don't get the 1% loan? We've got other funds that are underwater, we have staff that's underpaid, we have staff we haven't hired yet. These are all part of the larger picture that the city needs to take a look at, and we're going to be taking a look at. As much as I would love to give a, a portion of that to individuals or, or business owners, as, as Mr. Love just said, I can't imagine what that would look like, how much that would be, and how much would it cost to administrate that? And how to make that fairer to give which small businesses what at this point. So unfortunately, I, I too have got to put a pause on it as we look at our whole picture as a city and where we stand and what are our needs. And if there's some left over, yes, I'd still like to get some to the small business, but I can't do that until we have much larger pictures, which we, of conversations which we've been talking about.
Yeah, I, I want to say that I, you know, I spoke with Larry and others on multiple occasions. And I thought it was important that we bring this forward, so that at least we have the discussion. Because, you know, we did round one very quickly, as you identified, and I thought that was great. I, I think that was the right thing to do, and I'm glad we did. But, you know, with a number of folks that were still interested, I thought it important that we at least bring it back for discussion, so that we don't leave them hanging. And I, I too, you know, I sympathize with many of the businesses. I think COVID did a number on a wide variety of folks. And, and that, that it wasn't great. But where we are now, where the city is now in the needs that we have, I think, you know, I, I agree that we need to focus our resources on making sure that the city itself is functioning, is able to, to provide the core services that, that people expect. You know, that, there's a lot of, we are the smallest city in the county, but we still have 12,000 residents. And, and each of them depend on city services to some extent. So I, I would be, it would, I would be hard-pressed to say that unless something significant changes, it, it would be more than a pause for me. I just think that it's not, it is, it is not the, within the ability of the city to continue to have programs that do this, you know, as much as I... You know, as much as I, I would like to, I think we have finite resources and essentially unlimited needs. So, so with that, I would, I would say, I would not recommend taking action to, to do that now and where we are now. Or I would not recommend taking action to extend from what we've already done. And so I don't know if there's a motion that's required or if that is sufficient for, for staff at that point. And I don't, I think, yeah, if there's not any other comments? Okay, then I, that concludes item E. And we will move on to council items. This is item nine. This is limited to council requests and directives for future meetings. Is there anyone that has anything that they would like to request for a future meeting?
Well, one thing that I didn't realize until after our last meeting is that I was supposed to bring forward the Concerts in the Grove dates for the council's approval. And so I missed getting it on this agenda, so I think for the next one, the first concert is starting May 13th, so hopefully on May 2nd, we can approve the lineup. And the posters are up already.
No concerts for you.
What's that?
No concerts for you.
No concerts for me. And I do encourage you to go to the city website. You'll see the lineup there. And tomorrow, Vice Mayor Diaz and I are having our next Concert in the Grove meeting at 3:00 PM at City Hall on the first floor. So if you'd like to join us, we'll be there.
I saw the new flyer, and it is quite snazzy. Any other requests for future items? Okay, that closes item nine. And item 10 is council reports. Councilmember Cloven, would you like to kick us off?
Thank you. So last Thursday, April 13th, I chaired the Transpac meeting. Transpac, for those of you who don't know, is Central Contra Costa County's Transportation Group, which includes five cities of Martinez, Pleasant Hill, Walnut Creek, Concord, and Clayton. And we had a conversation regarding our work plan for 2023, 2024, which basically, what are our goals? Sounds familiar, huh? What are we going to focus on and how are we going to finance that? And we'll have a budget, which we too will pass in, in June of this year. There were two really good presentations that happened at that particular meeting. One was regarding State Route 239. And for those of you who actually travel to the Central Valley and go through Marsh Creek through Brentwood, that is going to be expanded into a major state highway. It's going to go from Brentwood through Tracy, and they're looking at the alignment possibilities for that. And that'll make things quite a bit more efficient for those who are going out that way instead of having to go around 680 to 580. There was also a really good presentation by Contra Costa County 511, which talks about alternative transportation and funding for mass transportation. Found the presentation fabulous, and if you don't mind, I'd like to have them do a presentation in the future because I thought even for Clayton, which most of us are commuters, having their services and, and what they provide was pretty phenomenal to hear that. So I'll bring that back hopefully for you to put on a future agenda. I attended the Clayton Pride meeting, which is a parade that's going to happen on June 4th on Monday night, and I'm getting excited. And if it's a half as joyous of event it was last year, I'm looking forward to seeing it happen again. And lastly, I've been spending a lot of time because I'm in the last few days before Saturday, which is Earth Day, April 22nd, and we are having our Clayton Cleans Up function. I'm hoping for 200-plus participants. I've got T-shirts. We have the barbeque going. We have nine different community exhibitors who will be out there showing who they are and what they, what they do. And it's going to be a great event. I'm looking for all of you to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Mine is very brief. I attended the mayor's conference. I will let you give that update. That was at the beginning of the month. I also had meetings with our Community Development Director and our interim city manager. And I also met with a resident regarding the GAD and the history of the GAD, and actually went on a little tour with him to see some of the issues that were up there. And so I can't wait for our next GAD meeting, once we have that. And then also attended the Clayton Pride, several Clayton Pride meetings. And Peter already stole my thunder for when, I'm sorry, Councilmember Cloven, already stole my thunder for when the Clayton Pride event is, which is a Sunday, June 4th at 10:00 AM downtown.
I too attended the mayor's conference with CCTA doing a presentation. Mayor O, but you can add to that. It was a terrific evening. I also attended the Clayton Library Foundation, Community Library Foundation meeting last week, and we were doing a five-year goal-setting session. The Library Foundation recently received a $250,000 grant, $50,000 a year for five years. And so we were putting things into buckets like year one, year two, so on and so forth, which will continue at our next meeting. And I will also be at Clayton Cleans Up, and I'm going to be volunteering to help clean the exterior of the library property. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. As your representative, the County Connection Board of Directors, I'm also on their Administration and Finance Committee. And one of the interesting things that came up at that meeting was for, and I know many of you are probably not aware of financial matters in that regard, but the County Connection used for years a union bank, and Union Bank got acquired by another firm, and they did not have the same kind of customer service. So after a huge study, the Finance Department of the County Connection selected the Bank of the West. But the Bank of the West got acquired by the Bank of Montreal. So that's the new financial entity for it. But I will tell you this, looking at all the financials, it was the right decision because the Bank of Montreal, even though not a US bank, had some very competitive, competitive rates for the services that they provided. I also attended the mayor's conference. Interesting transportation presentation there. Barbecue committee is moving along. That is coming up on the 29th and 30th of July. I attended and spoke to the Bay Area retired FBI agents on, on the 13th. We had our pre-event City Clayton Art and Wine Festival Security Meeting yesterday with the security provider and the police department, met with the city manager on a couple of occasions, and that's it.
Thank you. That's a lot of hype for the mayor's conference. I did attend the mayor's conference. It was a very interesting presentation regarding, the focus was on, I think, two main areas. One was the Gomentum Station, or Go, I think that's what they call it, Gomentum Station, which is an autonomous vehicle testing ground. That is, you know, there's a, they mentioned that there's just a few centers in the, in the country that do this, and they create all sorts of scenario that autonomous vehicles may need to encounter. And then they run them through the paces and see how they do. Hopefully, they do really well because I think it's, it is really promising tech. But then they also talked about piloting some of these vehicles, and so they had images of, of these driverless transportation devices. I don't even call them cars anymore because they don't even look like cars. They're just like little rectangles. And so in San Ramon, they, you know, they're piloting this program. You know, they, there was a lot of interest in it from the audience, and it was made very clear that this is privately funded. And if you are interested in having this come to your area, then they would love to do it in your area if you pay for it. So, but it was, it was a great presentation. I, I think the future of this, of this tech is, has a lot of promise. So we'll see. I spent time working with our finance director, kind of making updates, draft updates to our investment policy. And we'll bring it back to the Budget Audit Committee as we discussed at our prior meeting, but just making various, various edits in that regard, as well as working with city staff quite a bit on future agenda, putting together what, what will come before us and within the next couple of meetings. And then I was out of town for quite some time, enjoying Disneyland. So that is the extent of my report. And so with that, this closes item 10. And the next item is adjournment. So 9:02, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.